I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming, we appreciate it. So we have minutes before us from the January 17 meeting. I was not here, so it's up to you guys.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for 17th, 17th, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, on January 1.
I'll second that.
I'll move second to approve minutes as presented. I'll say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then Pam, you ready on the payroll and the order it is?
Payroll is 195.
Okay, so we have payroll approved, approved in the amount of 195,173.25.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of 195,173.25.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, payroll approved. Then we need to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims accounts payable report, and that's in the amount of 155,250.41. And that's pretty normal size, wasn't it?
I make a motion to approve, or acknowledge receipt, no.
Yeah, acknowledge the receipt of the payroll accounts.
Yeah, and the amount of 155,250.41.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's the need today?
Six.
Six, okay. All right, then we have accounts payable in the amount of 574,010.15.
I make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the accounts payable in the amount of 574,010.15.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Got all your stuff covered that you need to cover, okay. As you know, things are different. We have new, new auditor's office staff and ways of doing things, and so these first couple meetings are going to be an adjustment for all of us. And long as I've said that, let's go write you this if we could. We had a request here from... We had a request from the Sentinel. It's always been our policy in the past to notify them of everything. There she is. So it's just a request from the Sentinel, a normal thing, request that our governing body give the editor of the newspaper written notice of the date, time, and place of any of its meetings, executive sessions, and reschedule or reconvene meetings, so I don't know that we need...
We normally handle that internally. You guys never see that, but we all...
So, because it's always been done by the auditors before, and that may have fallen through some cracks before, so...
We'll get it.
Okay. And I understand the request for it. Should have been done before. All right. I think, ready for new business items?
No, we have two out-of-cycle checks.
Ah, I see those. There they are, okay.
There's only one on the agenda. The other one came in at like...
Make a motion.
Just make a motion.
There's two out-of-cycle checks that we've been presenting. The first one is to Quadent Leasing for 472.54, and the other is to the Indiana Office of Technology for 150.31. So I make a motion, we approve both of these as an out-of-cycle check.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any information here for us? All right, we have commissioner appointments at that time of year again. I have not had any requests from anyone for a change or anything. You guys had any requests for anything to be changed? I'll keep it in place. We have an open seat on the plan information. But I've had no one, I mean, I had a conversation with anybody looking to do that, so we'll try to do that. Do you have a recommendation, Katie, on the...
Yeah, I think there's a letter later on.
Yes.
Why don't we just do that now, while we're going through our appointments? Who is it you want to...
Delbert Lewis. He has offered to, like, Peta Boa Board chooses not to get paid, they do it as a service to the county, and for that reason, there's not very many that are willing to do that, and Delbert Lewis has stepped forward and said he would be willing to sit on the board in place of Jim St. Clair.
Okay. Anybody have any concerns or questions? Or is there a motion to appoint Delbert Lewis? I'll make that motion, we appoint Delbert Lewis to the Peta Boa Board.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, will you let him know then?
I certainly will. Thank you.
And I know that I'm probably... Does anybody know the last time that any of these people were notified they were on these boards?
No, we leave it up to the boards if they need to have a change, you know, if I ask. And there'd be no way we're going to contact all these people every year, see if they want to do them. I know on the ones that I'm on, there's no, no one's asked for changes, the CVC and such, but... I've heard nothing of any changes. The only other office we have is plan commission. Dan, have you heard of anybody...
No.
...in planning and zoning? And that's the only opening we have, so is there a motion?
Did you go to the second page?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we only had two there. And one we had a replacement where we just did, and the other one, we don't have any suggestions for that one yet. We'll have to work on that.
Looks like there's maybe one on the health board too, Jim, but I don't...
I haven't, I've not heard anything.
I've got Stephanie for the House Board here on Far and Down.
Oh, okay. Why don't we do that now while we're doing these appointments, we get the appointments all at the same time?
I didn't think it was...
Let's go ahead and find those, then we do all of those right now, however, until we got them.
Hey, Jim, your library board one's vacant. Nellie Myers resigned as a library board.
I was not aware of it.
You appointed, you appointed somebody from reserve township who had resigned because...
Right, right. The last one I talked, Randy was going to give us somebody, but I'm not...
At least, yeah, you've got two, my wife and another one. Nellie is not on the library board anymore, so you've got a vacant one there.
Okay, well, let's make sure we don't reappoint Nellie, then, if she's still listening on here. If we can find it.
It's on page two, about three quarters of the way down.
Okay. Yep, okay, so let's strike Nellie in our motion. Lisa is going to continue?
Yeah, but I don't think she's due yet, anyway.
She goes to 25.
Yeah, the only number we have is, is on that front page, and the rest, I don't know who else there is.
They can certainly send you a recommendation.
That's why we always wait for that. She doesn't live in the town.
That's right.
She lives in Monaluma's Library District, not ours. Okay. So marking that, we have one opening that we're not going to fill on the plan and zoning, and one opening on the library board that we are not going to fill at this time. So we have stricken, that's the word, Nellie Myers from, from the appointments, and... So it won't really involve our motion of renewing the appointments that we have on page one. Those are all 2023, and none of those people have indicated to me that they're not interested in being reappointed, so I'm assuming that those are all good to go, and we can always adjust those if we have to. So is there a motion to make the appointments for the 2023 commissioner appointments as presented?
I make that motion, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've moved a second to make the commissioner appointments for 2023 as presented, no changes. All in favor, say aye. Close? Okay.
So I guess those two, the...
In the packet, there should be some things from the health board that you need to sign.
Okay. So I, on the library board, I don't see Randy Nealon.
He's appointed by Clay, Clay and Southwest Park combined.
Oh, okay, because he's not on this list for our appointments. Is he present on the library board now? Okay, because he's the one contacting me about that Lisa wasn't going to be able to stay because she had the other district that she's involved with. Okay, takes care of that then. All right.
Go down a little bit, and it will be the House Department.
See where we are here.
Because there's a fee schedule ordinance under the...
Got you, I see it. All right, so we have another appointment here to the health board. Park County Health Board requested Dr. Swain be reappointed for another term. We, these are right there below, yep, we can do that, so I would make that motion. Dr. Swain has been a service to this county for decades and decades, and he is so willing to, to be that officer. I think we are really in good, good hands health board-wise. We are one of the few counties in the state, in fact, and I've been in many commissioner meetings involved with this. Most of, most of the boards in the counties just fight, there's no other word for it, they just territorial fight over everything. And I know the relationship between the health board and commissioners, maybe decade ago or more, was not good, never heard anything, didn't know what they did, or not saying they didn't do anything, we didn't know what they were doing. And I think now the relationship has been really good. Chris, in the emergency management service, Chris O'Brien, has worked with health board on many things, and have accomplished many things. We able to do a great job for the county through the COVID things, with the testing and the shots and all that. So I'm really, I'm really pleased where we are, so I'd, I'd make the motion that we reappoint Dr. Swain to the health board.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Two more.
Okay, I think, okay.
For the Health Department.
Okay, let me get that, get down there, that's the one I got there. The other two we have then, we can do at the same time, is Ronnie Hill and Sharon Montgomery. And Stephanie's made sure that these are all accurate as far as Republican, Democrat. The state statute requires that you have no more than a simple majority of one party over the other, and so she's making sure that we are in conformance of that. So I'd make the motion, we appoint Sharon Montgomery and Ronnie Hill to the health board.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All right, you guys aware if there are any other appointments that we need? We can work on the health board fees here a little while. Should take care of our appointments.
Underneath those on your list, there's a local board of health membership roster, if you want to...
Oh, okay. One I need to be tested. Oh, I see it. Now, so now we have three Republicans, three Democrats. The state would be happy with this. All right, ready to move on? Chris O'Brien.
We post the phone contract, okay, I need to sign. Just, of course, there's like a million things, you got to sign on that. So there's two contracts, and then if you look at the bottom of each, so there's a little sticky that shows where you need to sign, and then you need to initial each page.
Okay.
And so there's the installation contract, which can come from the ARP money.
Okay.
And then there's the maintenance contract.
Okay.
The maintenance contract will start a year after installation, and the county has it right now for the courthouse. And so for the two buildings, and, or isn't in there, we also have to pay software updates. So that whole thing comes to about $47,000, $4,700 a year, and that's the maintenance contract for both these two buildings and the software, which is similar to the one that, which is the exact same contract as we have for the courthouse, which we pay off seven grand for.
Okay.
Seth Gibson tell that.
Yes, yeah.
And then that money would come out of the commissioners' fund that you pay all your utilities and IT stuff for. And then the contract for the installation would come out of the ARP funds, and that's going to be a little over $48,000.
In case you're unaware, I always want to make sure everybody's informed, the ARP is the American Rescue Plan money from the federal government, and it comes with stipulations of what it can and can't be spent on. We got about, was it 3.2 million is what we got, I think, through that? And so this is one of the items that we're paying is to update our phone system and the, and the jiggle, so they all work together with the courthouse prosecutor and everything else, so we got that, Chris? Is that all you need?
Can I, so I can make copies?
Did you make that offhand?
I'll make a copy for you right now. You just said every page though needs to be initial.
I'll go check.
Oh, okay, I did.
I'll check.
Signed to four places, so if you bring it up, I'll make a copy of it. I mean, I'll initial all of those. All right. It's just weird. All right, Kim.
Yes, I'm here to get my annual investment policy signed, which has to be done every year. And I just wanted to let you know that interest really went up last year, which was nice.
Good.
Because in '21, we brought in about $45,000. Last year, we brought in over $450,000 between CDs and bank accounts.
Where do you have the money, where do you spread it around?
First financial.
Oh, First Financial, okay.
And they give you the same rate as Indiana bond, or trust Indiana bond.
Okay, great. It's nice to use local if we can.
Yes.
So what is it you need our motion to say for you?
Yeah, I just need you to approve it and sign it. Nothing really ever changes.
Oh, I hadn't seen it, that's why, that's why I was wondering, because I hadn't seen this yet.
It just has to be done yearly.
Okay, so it's the, saying that the designated depositaries for public funds remain at First Financial and Fountain Trust. And it talks about Old National's closing, it's unavailable, fifth thirds, not, doesn't wish to collect taxes, so that, that won't work. So just basically explain why we're using those banks as opposed to, but we're just using First Financial now. Okay, so I'd make the motion.
But we still use Fountain Trust.
Oh, you do?
For some CDs.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
So I make a motion, we approve the, the financial investment policy as presented by the treasurer.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we need $450,000 in interest last year? Wow, good. What money are we holding there, just money that's not been appropriated yet?
We have like 2 million, 2.9 million in CDs, and then the rest is our main account.
Okay, great. You'd be the council's best friend here. You'd be on a good list.
Can you hear him growling over here?
Yeah. That it? Okay. Next up, Penn Township trustee.
Well, they just wanted you to see the new members.
Okay. All right. So Austin Swain is now in the...
Wabash Township.
Wabash Township, okay. All right.
That's what she sent in the email, it's all in that file.
These are just the standards for township assistance. Typically Sharon Malone shares those with us too. I imagine you weren't going to keep that with our stuff or whatever you have. Okay.
She asked me to bring it to the...
That's the only change, the Austin, right, it's the only, only new one.
I think so.
No, actually, well, those townships, your sister is in that, couldn't township, it's a new one.
There's a resolution. Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff Webster.
And I have that cabinet.
Okay, Katie.
Yes, sir. In front of you or in her packet, we have the infrastructure abatement zone application from Bloomingdale Home Telephone Company. They normally send that in. Usually it's gone to Cindy, and I asked Cindy if she wanted, and she said, no, I can just present it since I do the bulk of the legwork with it, so that's this year's application, and it has to be signed by you folks, and then Thursday it'll be signed by the council.
Okay. Is there a... Okay, okay, and have you signature for this?
I'm not sure which place you sign. I mark exactly, it's not financial.
Their executive board, the fiscal board is the council.
Yep. All right, so... Anything else? Okay. Gene Stout, Westler. I hear this, I got the number.
I'll take care of that first paragraph.
Okay.
They need a letter authorizing.
Okay, so George has been our proxy on the solid waste for, for a long time, since he was commissioner, and we've always extended him, and apparently he's willing to serve.
Yes, he is.
You're okay with that as well?
Yes, he is, yeah.
So is that your motion to...
I make a motion, we appoint George as proxy for the solid waste board.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Now, what about getting him a letter?
I'll get the letter out.
If you're going to contact him with the other information, just...
I'll just look back to that.
Okay. Then we had the fee schedule, I had to look that up a minute ago, from the health board.
A change in ordinance number 2022-15A.
Is that the only change on that that we need to do?
They had some fees they updated on it. We had passed it before, and they had the old fees, and so they updated the fees, and we had talked about that maybe two meetings ago, I think.
Okay.
So I think the change was the fees.
Let me find that. Fee structure, I had it removed ago. I have to, yes. Remove that, we went to the appointments. Did they indicate which ones were different than what we presented before?
They had, I don't remember off the top of my head, I can look real quick.
Yeah, I don't see anything under highlighted.
I might, she just thought it and said bring it to you.
Okay.
You should have pulled the other one out.
Yeah, I don't really like approving it without knowing what it was before, but we approved it before. They had their own numbers in there before. So we want to prove it as it's presented, right?
Yes, since...
Okay.
I think I can look it up, or try to find it.
I'll have that somewhere in my email, I just, unfortunately, I get a few emails every day.
I think I have them up to $100, but I don't remember which one.
Yeah, temporary food establishments, potentially hazardous foods, $100. I was looking to see what was. The yearly temporary permit, $100. Commercial septic permits, I don't know if they were, were there $100. Yeah, I think the temporary permit for all festivals all year, I think that's, that's still under, I mean, that'll be up for some time. So I don't see anything out of line.
They added a late fee to retail food establishments in paragraph A.
Yep.
The menu type number two went from 50 to 80 under A. The late fee under B4 went from 100 to 50. That's all I see, based on the markup they gave me.
Okay. You guys have any questions? Do you want to prove it as it's given? Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2022-15A, which is the fee schedule for the board of health.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Something need to make some changes to.
Scratch it out. Draft that particular ordinance, I don't think, but they ought to be retroactive to whatever their original ordinance was. Would there just be an amendment?
I could be called something grocery, but big gray isn't too bad.
Probably hand management.
Yeah.
All right, Stephanie Dowd.
Yes, I presented at the last meeting.
And I saw that, I, I had it on Zoom, even though I was gone, yeah.
So you've heard why we think it would be important if we ran the opioid settlement funds alongside the local coordinating council. We would, just to be sure that there was no duplication in funding, and that the LCC has that council that's made up of law enforcement, school counselors, met the community mental health center, the Hamilton Center, and others attend, and we review those applications, and so it would be, how we foresee it would work is that anybody or program that was interested in applying for those opioid settlement funds, that LCC council would review that application, which we already have in place, and that way we could see what other programs are going on that's similar, or with everybody's involvement of what's going on in our county, could make suggestions or approve that those, that those funds, the opioid settlement funds, would go towards that.
What is the amount of funds, at $80,000?
The, let's see, there's in the restricted fund, there's about $56,000, and the unrestricted funds, there's about $23,000.
I absolutely agree with where you were with people who want to apply to come to you so you can coordinate all that stuff. My personal, I don't know about these guys, my personal feeling, and all those types of things are typically that those funds stay with the county, then you, once you guys, once your board has made a recommendation, you just simply bring that recommendation to us, and we make the final approval on that. And we're not going to be, we're certainly not going to be spending that money because we're not capable, able to do what you guys do because we're not in the loop. not capable, able to do what you guys do because we're not in the loop with that stuff. But I would think, I can't imagine a situation where it wouldn't, but it could, where any recommendation you brought to us requests those funds. I can't imagine that we would, we would deny those unless we had some strange reason, I could imagine. So that'd be my opinion. How about you guys?
Yeah, that's kind of what we discussed the last meeting when you went here.
Okay.
Thought it was only fair.
So we don't really need to change anything on that. So the funds will just stay with commissioners and you just come to make whatever request you get, whenever you get them and we'll, we'll go down that path. We certainly intend to be your partner on all those things.
So for clarification, they'll bring in the thing and then that claim that they turn in needs to come to you for approval before we process the.
It will not be a claim. No claim will be turned in until we've approved the request.
All right.
Stephanie, has, has there been any updates since we last met on, from the state as far as the accounting guidelines or anything like that? Okay.
No, the only thing that's been provided.
Because I think the council will probably at this point go appropriate that money as well, won't you?
Yeah, it will not be appropriated.
So what's, what, what do they have in the restricted part of that fifty, fifty thousand item versus the non-restricted? What kind of things?
Well, the unrestricted have, have some similar, um, similar projects or programs or that can be funded, but it, it allows a little more flexibility.
Okay.
So we've got a list. I think I distributed this at the last meeting of what the state has provided in their list of opioid remediation uses.
Okay.
So this will be reviewed upon each request and we can let you know which, you know, category it falls in to make sure.
I was gonna say, and really that'd be our only role would be make sure that's coming out of the right funds, the right side. We do have to deal with that with the highway department, for example. We have funds can be used, some things are not used for other things and we have, we're very aware of how that works. So it sounds like that should be a good partnership. You guys just take your requests, you come to us with those requests and we'll, unless we have some unforeseen thing, I can't imagine that we would over, overrule you on any of your choices. Doesn't mean we couldn't, but I don't, I don't see that coming up because we wouldn't know what the issue it was at all anyway, so. All right.
Just to make sure I understand, our LCC meets monthly, so they will make their presentation at our meeting and I'll request to be on the agenda to present.
Yes.
And then I'll work with.
Yeah, yeah. Instead of your board approving the plan and the fund, you're approving the plan, coming to us to request the funds and that's, then we wouldn't do that then.
Okay, that sounds great.
I appreciate all the work you guys do. It's a complicated world, I know, and I appreciate, I've been there, I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay, Roy.
As at least a couple of you are aware, in my position as the president of redevelopment commission, we have had, which is nothing to be unexpected, some issues with repayment of a few loans and a revolving loan fund. And Nick has worked on a couple of these that sparked what we're, what I'm gonna ask you to do.
If you don't mind, you can just say, I, I always phrase somebody, I don't know what we're talking about, talking about revolving fund. We were given a grant from the state. We have money available through the redevelopment commission. I think we have a hundred thousand dollars where we can bank and we can make those loans to people who come in and ask the redevelopment commission. It's not a commission, so it's a redevelopment commission decision to, for those funds. And one of the requirements we make with ours, and not every redevelopment fund does that, we require that you've been turned down by some other financing. You've gone to a bank and you just weren't established enough and they didn't have confidence to give you a loan. That doesn't mean you're done. You can come, the state encourages new entrepreneurs to get a break, but they can't get the money from a, from an established bank, which I understand, so they have funds available for redevelopment. And that's what we're always talking about. We talk about.
These are strictly economic development loans or they're business startups, so on and so forth.
And they are risky.
And, and they are, generally they are, and that's why they, they can't get commercial financing. But to carry on with what I was saying, Nick has worked on a couple of these cases, has legally pushed as far as we can with the two individuals that we're working on right now. So what I, what we decided in our last meeting was, was to pursue repayment through the, what is called the TREX system. And that is a, a program that was put together by the legislature with the Department of Revenue, the State Department of Revenue, where you can file claims on individual state income tax refunds to pay back public debt. Now, that can range from, you know, an unpaid utility bill to an unpaid loan. The Association of Indiana Counties is the only clearinghouse for this program, so they manage it. So they would be, they are the entity that a county or any other local unit of government in the state of Indiana will provide the information to them. They will aggregate all of it together into a database that is then presented regularly to the Department of Revenue. So if I have public debt and someone has filed a claim through this system, when I file my income tax return, they can claim, they will, they will garnish, for lack of a better way of saying it, my income tax refund from the state, this is not federal, this is only state, and that will then be delivered to the claiming entity. So what we have chosen, since we have run out of options as far as, I mean, Nick has gotten a judgment against these individuals and they are in neighboring counties now. They are not in this county. And that is as far as we can go with the situation there. But we are going, we intend to put this on that system. This memorandum allows us to join the system and it then also opens the door for any other county debt situation. So if somebody owes a fee to an office in, in county government, as long as it's above twenty five dollars or an aggregate thereof, so if you owe one office thirteen and the other office thirteen, you can put them together to get twenty five, that can be filed on it and, and to, to attempt to collect our local taxpayers' dollars. These, this does require that we have a, a single point of contact. I am asked the treasurer if she would serve in that capacity because this is a revenue receiving entity situation and she has agreed that she would do it. She will work further here with Cindy as making sure that we get everything presented, turned in appropriately. We have probably missed the cycle this time because this starts in October, so we probably will not see any, anything from it now. But it doesn't go away. Once you join it, you're in it, you can, you can add on to it as they come in and there's a file mechanism you put together. It's basically an Excel file in a certain format.
Do they have means to appeal that?
They have, they have to be notified. This does, and the memorandum clears that, or states that in the, in the process. So any individual that you pursue this with has to be notified that they are going to be filed against in this. And as long as they do not do that, then you go ahead and pursue that. They have an appeals process that exists in it. So if there is an error, of course, then they can get themselves out of it.
Okay.
And once it's, once, once you pay the debt, you come off and it's, it's open.
So you need us to approve of this MOU?
I need you to approve the MOU with the Association of Indiana Counties and with the agreement that Kim and Cindy will, will submit it, that the treasurer, the county treasurer will be the, the point of contact for the system. And there's a form, I, I assume, Mary Ann, you put the second part of that little one page form in with it, that.
I'm assuming.
Those are the things that they need for that, which I just put that in for information.
I'm assuming you said I'd list Kim Shorter, but we should list treasurer, so if it changes from your.
Yes, it, it, you need the name, the name, but, and the title.
The other thing that's important to notice, he mentioned another requirement, we do have to do that, but it also doesn't cost the taxpayers to be in the system because the cost is tapped on to whatever that we're trying to.
Correct.
So it's not, it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything.
Yeah, we don't, we don't lose, I mean, if we claim a hundred dollars in it, assuming they get a refund eventually enough to add up to that, we will get the hundred dollars. We will not pay the twenty five dollar fee to the AIC for going after it. They, the, the guilty party will pay one twenty five.
It's gotta be that owed to a municipality or a government.
Yeah, I mean, towns, counties, townships.
Utilities, the whole.
So like, maybe that would be a sub-governmental entity to the county or whatever, or however you want to.
Yeah, this will, this will open it up for the sheriff's department, EMS, the whole, the whole thing.
It's actually your best mechanism to get a hopeful return.
I agree.
Small claims, so, so far.
Amen and service has a very difficult time making their, their stuff.
TREX has been around a while.
You guys have any questions on it?
I'll make a motion. We approve a memorandum of understanding with the AIC to join the TREX system. Also, part of that motion will be to designate the county treasurer, in this case now Kim Shorter, as our coordinating person within the county.
And I'll second that.
All fair share. All right, thanks, Roy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So on signing it?
Yeah, the, the back pay, so stage.
Are we claimant, claimant agency? There's three lines there, that's us, Nick? Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right.
The, no, the, yeah, the back, yeah, claimant agency, kind of task for.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Ooh, potential spam.
Yeah, you can change that ringtone.
Good.
Probably need to renew your automobile warranty.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Is this a life policy? Where we're changing?
The bond, it's where they.
Ah, okay, that's what the insurance is. I never think a bond is being insured, but yeah, okay, I got you.
Public officer.
I just need to, they just, they did it earlier, but now they have to have your signatures.
Gotcha. So we've already approved it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we just need to sign it. Okay. Okay. And, all right, William Ball.
That's just more information I got and I just made a copy for you guys.
Nothing here new to you?
That's that toward claim I was telling you about earlier, that insurance had, said that, I think it's been ruled upon now at this point, so I don't think anything had come of it.
Then we have, I'm sorry.
We need to revise the payroll thing because this should have been revised back in February two thousand twenty when we had that extra pay and she never revised it. So now we have to have one for hourly and one for salary.
Okay, so.
And have to try to figure out how to make it work for her.
Yeah.
So we need, just to prove these two schedules, one for the hourly pay and one for the salary pay. Then I make the motion that we approve the payroll schedule for hourly and the payroll schedule for salary as presented by the auditor's office.
I'll second that.
All in favor of say. All right.
And I spelled his last name wrong.
Okay.
It's Austin.
Okay, Kenny Austin.
Yes, sir.
Tell us what you got.
Here in Scotts County Road eight hundred.
Is Randy here?
Eight hundred south.
Randy, why don't you come on in so we can, we can have, have you in on this too, so we know where we are and what we're talking about. Here, Randy, you're just chairing, you'll be coming up here next anyway, so come on up and join us. Sorry to interrupt you there, I just wanted to get Randy involved, you know what's going on too. So what you got?
So I've been on County Road eight hundred, so my name's Kenny Austin. I've been living on this road for eighteen years. I believe I spoke to every one of you over eighteen year period about this road. So I, I am here today to discuss my concerns about the shape of the road has become. So I understand that you folks, you know, get funds from community crossroads in the amount of one million every year, correct? Okay. And then do you also get funds from the state in fuel taxes? Is that correct? And, and how much is that?
Randy, you know, what our highway budget from the state is for. And I guess you really want to say, it really doesn't matter because we spend every dime on roads that are in bad shape, so that's what we do. So if this has risen to the top of the list, that's what we need to know, so we need to know that. There's no money not spent on roads when we get those funds. All that is spent on roads and we have to go out and decide which ones are worse. In fact, with the community crossings, we have to apply for those and we can get up to a million and we pretty, pretty well get it every year. And then with county has to match, match that, twenty five percent for a county our size. And we commissioners go around with Randy every year and look at the roads and we have to try to prioritize as best we can.
True. And I, I understand and I, you know, I've heard from every one of you that, you know, this, this is how you perceive and how you select your roads.
So if we've seen eight hundred, then it didn't rise to that level of some that were worse, which it'd be hard for you to imagine that there might be some that are worse than that, but I've, I've not seen eight hundred, so I can't tell you my opinion on it, Randy.
You haven't seen it when and how long?
It was on it a year ago, we all.
I mean, since.
Yeah, I haven't, but well, I've been on it since.
I, so.
You, when, when you and I spoke this year, you said you'd never been on eight hundred.
Oh, I've been on eight hundred a hundred times. I had that last few weeks, but that area is mine. I got a son that lives over at Life, I've been on.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so.
What are your thoughts, Randy, on eight hundred?
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Is there a reason it's not been addressed? I mean, is it not as bad as some we've addressed?
We just decided the others were.
Yeah, worse.
Worse, I mean, and which they were.
Okay. There'll be a new round of grants coming up, again, every year there's one or two, two rounds typically. If you don't get all the money first time, you can go for more the second time, which we just got.
And if, and if we don't get money from the community crossroads, how does the county collect dollars for road repair improvement?
The only addition we have besides what we get from the state, and it's almost good to understand, the only access we have to that is, is a limited amount of income taxes, local option income taxes that we have, have to pay. My explanation to it, a gentleman called some time ago was, he works in Vigo County and the taxes in Park County, income taxes are higher in Park County than they were in Vigo County, and the roads are typically in worse shape than what where he was familiar with. And what he needed to understand, he had never thought about that before, we all obviously wish we had enough money to fix every road. That would be obviously it, the best thing. But what we have is we have about, I'll make it easy, say seven hundred and fifty miles of road. Vigo County has about that, a few more, but not many more, but about the same. And so if both us and they come up with our million dollar grant from community crossings and the money in there from the state and we, we spend that, if we need to have another million dollars and that million dollars is only going to cover about ten miles of road now, so that's, that's not much.
It's five point nine.
Isn't that five point five now? So, so, so we have to pick the worst five miles or six miles out of that million dollar grant to fix. But what happens is if we have to come up with another million dollars, Vigo County has about a hundred and five thousand people, if you count everybody, a hundred and five thousand people to share that million bucks with, we have seventeen thousand to share that, share that with. And we're not going to assess our taxes, people another two or three thousand dollars in taxes to come up with that million bucks to need to fit the roads. And the only solution then is to patch and repair and patch and repair and try to extend it till we do get time. But it sounds like if we looked at it and it was on the list before and it hadn't got there and we got the other ones ahead of fixed, then maybe this next go around would be, maybe time. And we've had to, had to deal with that with a lot of folks. I mean, everybody wants a road fixed, I understand.
Well, I understand that and I understand, you know, getting to the point of just. Well, I understand it, and I understand, you know, getting to the point of just where there's no repair too, you've just got to rip it up and redo it, but, I mean.
Yeah.
It's that to that point, okay?
That's what we need to know.
And that's my opinion. I mean, unless she showed me another road that's worse.
Sure.
I, I would love to go drive on it, you know, I drive a, a one ton truck, you know, that's just the way it is, that's the truck I drive, that's the truck I chose.
Yep.
Now, out of the four hundred miles that, that's in this county that you maintain.
That's paid.
So that is paid, four hundred miles of paid.
Right.
Okay.
A little over four hundred.
Yeah, so, so back in, I'm sorry.
I started to ask Randy, how long is eight hundred? Have you measured it? Five miles, I think it's five mile.
Okay.
Four or five.
So that one would be the entire graph for the year, yeah, so, I don't know the option we have.
Yeah, I'm saying you have to do it all at once, I'm saying let's do a chunk this year and do another chunk this year, you know, share, share the, the love, but. Yeah, I don't know if you can do that.
Well, we can, but it only adds cost, if they have to move in, move out, and move in and move out, because we have to hire that done, we don't do those ourselves.
And so that's another question, I mean, last year you, you, you had a budgeted of a hundred eighty-five thousand per mile. Now, was that one quote you got from the contractor or you got multiple quotes?
We usually get one, we put in for several, but they've all been bought out, there is some small guys that. Uh, whole Nash Valley.
So you're kind of limited on, to their, to their dollar?
We go out for bids and, yeah, they usually come back with one bid, sometimes we'll get two, but, like the one that came from whole Nash Valley last year, it's actually milestone.
Five dollar outfit.
They're on by milestone, yeah.
And they are, but they, that's the game, so unless you do it, unless we do it ourselves, and we, we did that, we had a couple of years that we did it ourselves. But we pay for that in the long run, because if we, we're such a small apartment, if we're not doing our paving, we don't have time to do the other things that need to be done, so then those roads fall apart, so.
Okay, so.
I'm not trying to make any excuses whatsoever, I understand your plight, and you've been waiting a long time to get your road fixed. Sounds to me like if we were looking at eight hundred before, but others were worse than that one was, then I certainly can't promise that we'd be the one we would look, that we would choose this time. But just, just got to understand, I know it's tough, and, and, but I know you do, I'm not saying that, but that million bucks a year, it used to get us ten miles of road paved, now they get us five. And if you, if you can try to imagine, maybe yours is the worst five miles of road in the county, you don't know, we'll have to look at that again and see where we are.
So, here, here's my next question for you then, so in twenty twenty-two, there's an outfit to come and, and put a road counter on. So what was the result of that counter?
Well, that.
What did we get from that?
Well, if that's the one, I'm not sure where they put it, that was West Central, that's entirely different thing, that's an economic development, that's not a, that's not a counting cars to see what the priorities number wise, that was entirely different thing, that was economic development.
So the year that we, so the year that you folks paved County Road one thousand that had counters on it, that was my understanding, that's why that road got paved because of the traffic. That's what I was told.
Yeah, that's not true.
That was years ago.
So, so the counters, what information are you getting from them? Just how many, mainly as to, right now, West Central was during Bridge Festival before and after, trying to set a standard of what normal traffic is and see what the ex, ex, extra was for the, every bridge festival. LTAP also does counting from time to time, and they try to do help that on the road count with statewide, as far as what funding should be from the legislature, how many miles of road do we have, how many problems of traffic do we have? So that again is LTAP's local technical assistance program from the state operated through Purdue. So none of those counts would go to the state for us to request more money or less money, we're not going to get, it's all done by mile, by lane mile.
Okay. So, when was the last year that you have on record eight hundred was resurfaced?
I couldn't tell you that, Randy might be able to tell you.
Yeah, I remember doing it, but I can't remember what year it was.
Did we do it ourselves?
Yes. Tom Martin was still here.
Okay.
Oh.
Been a while.
So how far back were you talking?
When they put the cell, the cell tower up, down there, just this side of.
Yes.
Three fifty.
Yes.
Trucks went in there and tore the road up, and we stopped them, and made them bond the road, and so they paid for the road to be done.
I think I know where you're going with this, but the best case scenario is, we have to have a five year asset management plan. So we could put out what we expect to fix, what's going to be worse in five years. Doesn't mean a thing, because things come out, the roads fall apart, we get damaged roads, we have a, a window where you've got all your money spent on just snow removals. So even though we have an asset management plan where it looks out so far with a plan to do that, it's like promising your kids some gift someday or some trip someday, maybe it works out that way, maybe it doesn't work out that way.
So your evaluation from last year was eight hundred even on the evaluation for this year's funds?
That we.
Well, we drove the road again.
We, we.
Sure, I mean, I know you all drive the road, but.
You know, we go together, we go together.
We spent the whole day, all of us going together, we all keep our own tablet, and we start marking, grading the roads when we think they're one through five, five being the worst. And then by the time we get down with the whole day, we'll have a question mark here and there, it's tit for tit. I can't remember exactly, I'll have to go back through, but I know eight hundred, we didn't look seriously at it, because Randy and I sat and talked about it for a good while.
Yeah.
We actually had those over the ports falling rock that we ended up doing that was, you know.
So all the years that we've gone through, eighteen years that I've been there, and we've patched and patched and patched, and all that loose gravel has went to the sides of the road. So we don't do any maintenance to the county road at all, to the ditches, to, to improve the width of the road. So we have now grass that's narrowed the road width, so what is the average width of the county road supposed to be?
Depends on the right of way.
Eighteen, twenty feet.
I'm sorry?
Eighteen to twenty feet.
Eighteen to twenty, that's your average county width where paved.
Yeah, there's a few of them that are twenty-two, like the little Coxville Road for one, now that Federal Aid Road, Dunford School, and. Walk around roads a little wider.
Those rice of way were created years and years ago, how wide they are, and they, there's always eighteen, twenty, twenty-two.
Because that's, that's about where you're at, right in front of my house, you're, you're right at eighteen feet.
And I.
And that's, and that is the worst place to be narrowed up is right there.
Some of the newest roads that we did, we went to very, very edge, not even room for a shoulder, shoulder fork, we want to pave the whole thing, eighteen feet's all, all we got, not even twenty feet. That's using every inch that's ours to use.
Okay.
I wish we had a good answer for you, I, I will promise you that we'll go look at eight hundred again and see how that compares to, to anything else.
So when Randy, when, when you put pavement down, your folks comes out there and throws it down, how's it supposed to be applied? Do you just throw it in the hole and expect me to pack it in for you?
Well, yeah, really, because we don't have a roller, but.
Well, I don't want to get all over my truck.
Just a little bit.
I'm sorry?
For, going to try to switch over and just use patch machines, I've got two more patch machine and then try and.
We talked to the council last year, in fact, on that, instead of doing the patching, and I agree, it's not done well a lot of times, but.
It's not.
You've got to deal with the people you're dealing with, they all know that they should be rolling those, where I go out and patch holes, I roll, oh, those are smashing, and then I'll put white rock on top.
Get your tamper, I don't care.
So you don't pull it back out.
Let them do that rather than me using my truck and get it up all over my truck.
Well, the tamper's worthless, I can tell you that, because I tried that for a while, the best way to do it is roll back over with the truck. But even that being said, because I've said it to them and Randy's said it to them, you have some great workers in the highway department, you've got some people that couldn't care less, a lot of it is you just throw in the hole and drive one down the road.
Yeah, that is, you're, you're wasting your money.
I, I.
Because it goes off to the sides of the road.
We would both agree to that.
You've got this amount of gravel on the side of the road, the water can't even drain off.
Yep, I, I would not agree.
You're, you're wasting your money.
And we had a struggle with that, with a, with a gentleman who worked for us for years on a grave, he liked the canals, he wanted that road to be flat with the edges on the side, and that's just absolutely the wrong way to do that. But you've got people out working on daily thing, and you can train them and you can tell them, hope to get it, get it done right. And I think for the most part, our highway department does a great job with the, what funds they have, what resources they have, and material they have, we got great people working for them, we just don't have enough. Just imagine if you can, if it was your responsibility, and you like us will never pick the right roads, but just imagine you've got four hundred miles of paved roads out there, a little more, and you've got a grant of a million bucks from the state, you've got to go pick out the five, worst five miles out of that four hundred and do it. You're not going to have many people agreeing on what five miles you pick, but you're going to have.
I'm sure it's tough, I, I get it.
Well, it's not even tough, oh, we should be doing miles, I, I, I don't even mind, I, it's not tough at all, I mean, we have to go to what we think is worse, but that's, but that's where we are. So we'll go out again, I'll promise you, we'll, we'll look at eight hundred again, see where we're.
Please do, because I also ride a motorcycle, and you cannot come up the hill from Lifer and expect to be in the right lane when you're, when you have an oncoming vehicle.
Yeah.
Because you cannot ride the road safely in a motorcycle.
I will not, cannot promise that we will pave that this year, but I will promise you, we'll look at it again and give it the same consideration we give everybody else. But it sounds like it's been a long time for you.
It won't be this year, we've already turned.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, next year, when we do our assessments, which we have for the first of the year, usually it's, they're due in January, I think, and then in July or something like that, I think typically, so. We have a couple of sections, so, all I can promise is we will look at it again, and I, I, I understand, you've been waiting a long time to get that road fixed, we have a lot of people who've been waiting a lot of years to get those roads fixed.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of roads, it's, that was much better shape than eight hundred that got repaved.
And that's what we hear a lot of times, I understand, everyone picked the right one, I understand how that works.
If it makes you feel any better, it probably won't, but several years ago, I lived on a blacktop road and they ground it up, turned it to gravel, I still live on gravel road, I ride the motorcycle.
Least, least I could manage the gravel road.
Yeah.
With tractor and grade locks, you know, I'll do my own spot by afternoon, but.
Well, I promise you we'll look.
Well, appreciate you taking the time, bless you, Randy.
You come anytime, that's what we're here for, you, any, anything like that. And I get calls from people asking about roads, and they're always afraid that they're offending me or they're, they're complaining, saying, no, we, we, we're not on every road every day, I'm not on every road every month, I'm on a lot of them every, every month, but not all of them every month. Sometimes we wouldn't know, I got a call today from, up on eleven fifty, somebody dumped a load of rock on the edge of the road, and it's halfway up in the road, I mean, it's a big triaxial load of, load of rock, just dumped it. I wouldn't know that if somebody didn't call or, or tell me, so don't be shy about calling anytime.
So that brings another question up, the right of way goes how far off the road?
Never, never know, depends what they're, some rides away are like forty feet, some are twenty feet, some, some digits we have are actually in the fields.
Eight hundred south, where we have, right about my house.
I, I don't know what the right way is. Thirty foot, I believe.
You're thirty foot from the center of the road?
No, fifteen each way.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen off from the center.
From the center of the road, fifteen.
So if a farmer dumps a load of rock in the ditch so that he gains access to park his semis.
He should have a pipe.
To load, how do you handle that?
He needs a pipe. We will install it, he has to buy it, and if he doesn't, he'll have, he'll have to take that out and put a pipe in, they just cannot do that, it happens, it happens.
You need to get a hold of Brad Stone and have him address that.
Where is that?
Right next to my house.
And what, what's your address? Just can't do it, but it happens all the time.
Yeah.
I got in trouble a couple of years ago because somebody just dumped their truckload of trash on our road, that's the road along the right of way, just dumping on the road, expect somebody to clean that up, so I cleaned it up.
Gentlemen, appreciate it.
Well, I, I, we will look at it again.
Well, appreciate you doing, because it's, it's really bad, so.
I hate your frustration, I wish that we could fix them all, but we can't.
Alright.
But we'll try.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, anytime. Alright, anyone else have anything, oh, I have one thing, for us, with the highway department, Randy knows too, I had to do that today, DocuSign has changed everything, now you can sign things online. But to be able to retrieve those documents and file those documents, you'd have to be a member of DocuSign, it's ten dollars a month, it's a hundred and twenty bucks a year. So I've asked the auditor how we could do that, if I was to get that on my computer at home so I can sign those documents as I'm doing now, and how to turn it in, I can do that by just by paying it and bringing in the invoice, but I need your permission first, if you want me to, to pay that hundred and twenty dollars to, to get on, so we can retrieve the document signs at that time.
Is these all for the county highway or for different?
No, for different things, yeah. I usually have, like, we would just call in January, I would have at least two meetings a week, and I probably had a half a dozen things that I have to carry a printer, but I can print all the signs and ship back. Some things, like DocuSign, they just send you the document, and it's electronic signature, you can do that.
Yeah.
So for a hundred and twenty bucks, I, I, I could pay that myself, but I suppose that's an expense I don't need, but we can't give it just to the highway department or, or just to EMS or anything else, because they all use it, so. I'm okay with us if we got a hundred and twenty bucks in, in our fund someplace to pay, I'm okay with me going ahead and paying it and get that for a year and then turn the, turn the invoice in. I don't turn anything else, except for paper, ink, printers, I don't turn any of that stuff in, but this membership probably ought to get paid for by somebody else. Other stuff I can use from my own, I can't use DocuSign for anything, I'll just don't use that for anything that I do on my own.
It would be useful for personal reasons.
So it's okay with you, I'll just go ahead and do that and turn it?
I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we allow Jim to subscribe to DocuSign and then roll reimbursement for his cost, and I'll second that.
Fares out, okay. Anybody else have anything?
Hamilton Center has their twenty twenty-two county report, if you don't mind.
I do, I appreciate you being here, thank, you know, and really, I just had this conversation about you last week with Montgomery County, we were at a meeting with West Central Economic Development, president of the, of Thrive, and all counties struggle. In fact, that's legislation right now of trying to decide how we're going to do that. We have no other choice but to pay you, and the state tells us how much money we're going to pay you and who we're going to pay it, and that's it. And we've had this conversation for years and years and years, we didn't know what we were getting from the money, because that's just something the state said you shall, and that's all it was.
Right.
I know I said this before, I don't want to keep carrying on about it, I cannot, I cannot express enough how I appreciate you being willing to come and share, because we don't know if we're getting wins or losses or what we're getting, we just don't know. But I had this conversation with two other counties, one Montgomery County, just last week at a meeting, and they hear nothing from their mental, mental health people, I mean, nothing. They have a couple of options, and so when they're trying to decide whether to stay with the one or go with the other, they don't really know, because they don't know what they're getting for what they're, what they're paying for.
Right.
And that's why I really appreciate you being willing to come, we've tried this before down the road, it never happened, and this is happening good, I appreciate it.
I have no problem, that's what we're here for, and I'm hoping that this report will kind of give you guys a little bit more information. So last year, we served in Park County a total of five hundred and sixteen residents here in the county, which is great. Out of those five hundred and sixteen, ninety-nine residents received both addiction and mental health treatment.
Those five hundred and sixteen, how do you become aware of those five hundred and sixteen, self-reporting or someone?
Well, I was just going to get to that, so, yeah.
I'll shut up for a while.
Fine, ask the way.
I need to run this, is it okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you want to address this?
I will address it.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe, if it's on, the time we get there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So out of, out of that, we were talking about referrals, so we had a hundred and ninety-eight referrals. Those came from schools, they came from the hospital, primary care physicians, other mental health agencies, probation, court. So all of our kind of local and nonlocal areas submitted our referral sources for our residents. So they kind of come from all over, some of them are self-reported and come in and decide that they want services like we've talked about before here in the meeting, you know. But sometimes we get referrals from the school, from probation, from court, you know, all of those different places.
Did you have any mandated?
So I can actually tell you exactly, out of those hundred and ninety-eight, we had one that came from a residential or behavioral health hospital, so one referral. We had one that came from another mental health or behavioral health outpatient provider. We had twenty-eight that came from friends or family referral source, we had twenty-two that came from court, we had thirty that came from DCS or the Department of Child Services. We had one from parole, we had seventy-four from probation, we had fourteen from medical, like an ER or hospital.
I have two questions on this for you, go on.
Okay.
And I promise that we're interrupting you here.
No, you're good, that's.
The one for parole, is that someone contacting you that they're in parole violation, or is this someone concerned about that person that's on parole?
So usually somebody who is coming out of like a prison, who is in need of mental health treatment, and so we get a referral from, you know, the prison or from the legal side, and they'll send us a referral and say we've got so-and-so that's going to be released on such and such date, we're recommending them come in for treatment.
Is it, is it, I suppose it is, it, the question is, is it ever part of the parole that they have to report to you on certain times, or meet you so many times, or so often?
Usually between them and the parole officer, usually we just get the referral.
The other question is on friends and family.
Yep.
Are those very successful ones, some members called and told you that they got a family member that's got a problem, need to be fixed, does that easily receive you very well?
You know, I, I believe so, you know, it's that support that we're looking for with, you know, we're wanting our consumers to have that support in their corner, the people that are going to help them get to appointments, you know, people that are going to support them in their time of need, so we always appreciate those referrals, you know, because we immediately reach out. Same thing from the schools, we'll get a referral from a school, we reach out to the family, it's totally an autonomous choice whether that person decides that they're going to, you know, participate in the services, but we definitely get the referrals.
Do you ever get a request to participate in intervention, someone for the family to be there when they're doing the intervention, or?
Not that I am aware of, but I'm.
Is this something you would do?
You know, it, it really depends on the. You know, it, it really depends on the situation and if that consumer is part of. Or involved in services currently and if that was part of their treatment and there are lots of different things there that would have to kind of be looked at. So.
See, that's a whole different world for all of us. That's just a whole different world.
So I can tell you that, um, out of those consumers, most of them have either Anthem, Medicare, Health Net, private insurance, Medicaid. Self-pay or are paid through some state or local hospitals. Um, out of those three hundred and thirty-three of those consumers that we served had Medicaid.
Really?
So, yes. Um, I can also give you age and demographics if you'd like.
I'd love it.
So fifty-six pers, or fifty-six of those consumers were ages birth to twelve years old. Fifty-two were between the ages of thirteen and seventeen. Sixty-six were between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four. A hundred and eighty-nine were between the ages of twenty-five and forty-four. And then a hundred and twenty-five were between the ages of forty-five to sixty-four. And twenty-eight were sixty-five and older.
Really?
Yeah. So.
That's amazing to me.
Isn't that pretty?
That is.
Yeah, those ages really make a difference, kind of hit home, you know? Um, I will also tell you that, um, out of those age ranges. Two hundred percent, four hundred and thirty-seven or eighty-eight percent of our consumers were under. The two hundred percent of the poverty level.
Okay.
Okay. Um, outpatient services, we provided nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen outpatient services. So skills, case management, individual therapy, group therapy. And we provided two hundred and twenty-two inpatient stays, so inpatient hospitalizations. If somebody's having a crisis, then we got them to the inpatient unit. So we had two hundred and twenty-two days of inpatient stays.
Do you have any cases of just medications administration where someone comes to you for, for. They have a prescription for whatever medication they need, but you have to administer to them? Do you have those?
So we do and I will tell you, I do not think that that is in my current. I don't believe we track that currently.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's okay. I, I'd like to have those numbers to go over those times.
Absolutely, and I can absolutely give you a copy of this.
If we could have two most of the time, or, or you guys want one, two, four, so we can leave one with the auditor's office so we have those records. So if somebody wants to know, what are we, what are we getting for that tens of thousands of dollars? Yes.
I will say, uh, Mandy, I'll jump in here. Emily Owens with the Hamilton Center, we did send a report at the end of the year, last year, so you should have gotten it in December.
Okay.
Um, but we can definitely get you copies and then we can go back and get how many, um, of our consumers, our patients are prescribed medications. If you want that information.
And I'd like to see that. And I can, I can honestly admit that I've seen those reports in the past, although they were sparingly, uh, but in the past. But they didn't mean anything to me because we didn't, never had these conversations of what was going on and what they were doing. They were just numbers and I didn't know what those numbers were referring to or how they worked.
We appreciate you letting us come and.
I think we're all, society, I think, is coming to the point to realize we're not just all jerks. There's a lot of mental issues out there. There just are. And sometimes people can't do anything about those and they don't get help and they need to, need to have a place to do that help. And I think for us as a county, to be able to advertise that we have a legitimate place for your concerns. The L C C do these kind of things all the time and it's a partnership of all of us to see what is the best path. Because we, we certainly don't know what the best path down here is. That's a whole different world than what we do.
Absolutely.
You can't pave the road. Apparently we can't either.
I was gonna say, I can't pave the road, but I can help you with this.
But, but it's myriad of things. So all the things come together and just as much as we need Randy here with running the highway department, we need you guys to take care of that side. And not for us to tell you what to do, but for you, us, to have you tell us what you're doing.
Right. No, well, and we enjoy coming and having the conversations.
I don't feel like you have to go in until once a month or however often you want to come. You should come whenever you want to come.
Okay.
If you have an issue, I can't imagine if there is, but if there's ever anything we can do to help you do something, just let us know.
Oh, we will. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Would you like to see some of the expenses or would you like to review some of that very quickly or?
You can just include them. That's okay.
Okay, perfect.
That way, because they wouldn't mean anything. You tell me. I wouldn't know half hour of them, how would they work? But I like to have my hands with people. I ask what is it you're getting for what you pay. I can show them what it is.
Absolutely.
So we can leave a copy of what they ordered and if we could each have a copy just to have that at our disposal, it'd be great.
Absolutely. Let me put it in order for you.
And I know at some point I'll be educated enough on it to know.
Uh huh.
What a win is for you and, because I know your idea of a win was someone in that situation. I would have no clue what a win was. What, what level? How far up that mountain do you have to get to be a win? You know, is it just a positive step in the right direction? Is that a win? I, I don't know. But through our conversation, I'm learning. I'm trying to get there, so we understand. The toughest part was, is having patience with those people who need help and most of us struggle with that on our side.
Absolutely.
All right, well, I appreciate it. You just take your time. Get out what you have, what you want to do and I appreciate it. We'll, we'll go ahead and move on. You guys have any questions?
Appreciate it.
Okay, Randy, all you're getting in the hot seat, what you got?
Well, just, I'd like to, uh, through the motion to, uh, allow me to advertise for bids for the paving.
Thank you. Okay, I'd make that motion that we permit Randy to, uh.
Twenty twenty-two, or, yeah, twenty twenty-two dash two.
Step dice for bids.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So was that?
Just to notice that.
I don't know what the twenty twenty-two dash two is for. Cause it's twenty twenty-three.
No, this is what we just got, the two hundred and seven thousand, um, we're gonna do.
Last year, yeah.
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 That brings us up to a million. We're gonna do two hundred north up here, two seventy-five north.
Okay.
And quarter to two hundred north.
Yes.
All right, so what is it this needs to say for your records to say it accurately? It just says.
Last advertised for bids.
Okay.
Basically what we made the decision on a while back to finish up what we had shortfall on.
Yes. And when, how we got the money?
Let's go ahead and finish it, so.
Yeah.
This money is, and you gotta run that to see who's gonna bid on.
Yeah.
So to make this as plain as we can for, for Pam. I'd make the motion that we authorize Randy to ask, uh, to go seek bids to do the paving jobs that were approved by the last grant we got from community projects.
Yeah, no second touch.
All fair and say aye.
Right.
Okay. Got that? Okay.
We do have the applications turned in for the twenty twenty-three dash one.
Okay. Well, let's do work when we pick a date to go look at roads again. Let's make sure we include a date. And I understand that gentleman's paying to wait to get it fixed. Can't believe it. Million bucks and I get five miles of roads for a million dollars. How can that be?
Copy of this.
Okay. At that rate, it's gonna take four hundred years to do the four hundred miles.
It would take eighty million dollars just to repave the roads that we have. Eighty million dollars.
Explain to him, if we go five miles a year, four hundred miles. That's eighty years. The road gets redone every eighty years. Well, the road's like the last eighty years, you know? But that's, the money wise, that's what we've got is.
That's the most frustrating part of this job for me is to have that need out there and you can't address it because you just don't have funds to do it. What else you got?
Well, I talked to Roy with the council the other day. I went down, looked at some patching machines.
What kind of money are they?
Well, brand new ones. Uh, eighty-three, eighty-five nine.
Okay.
With the attachments on it.
And what was the council looking at, willing to approve? One or two?
Well, I asked him about two and they're used ones. Uh, one of them is a two thousand and three DuraPatcher like we've got. Um. He's got one of them down there. It looks like a good machine. It's only got, uh, sixteen hundred hours on it, so that's. Hardly any hours really.
Yeah, forty weeks.
Uh, it's seventeen nine, but I would like to have, had two thousand that's and get a crack seal.
Okay.
Attachment on it.
Okay.
And then he's got a refurbished one. Uh, it's a. Got nineteen hundred and sixty hours on it. It looks like a brand new one. They just completely redone everything on it, painted it and all.
What year is it?
No, I don't see the year on there. And I forgot to ask him. No, yeah, it's not on there. Um. But it's got the water flush system, the crack sealing system included in it. Uh, he's wanting fifty-one nine hundred on that one.
So do you have preferences? Do you have prior, prioritize which one you would go with?
Yeah, I'd like to have both of those.
Okay.
Um, that's cheaper than the new one.
Yeah.
And they're low hour machines.
So you just need a motion for must have approved intention upon.
Yeah, the, the council's already approved it.
They already approved it?
Yeah, Roy.
Okay.
Either text them all.
Okay.
And, uh.
Are you gonna have staff to operate them?
Well, yeah, we have to find some.
One have to be C D L driver, but they're.
I'll just have to take two C D L drivers and put with the.
Okay.
The non-C D Ls.
Be wonderful to get away from having to just throw stuff in the holes like, like you was talking about. Been frustrating me for years and do the real patching if I stay on this line or just patch the last one.
Yeah, it takes a little longer to do it.
It does. It does. You guys have any questions?
Nope, I make a motion since Randy has already talked to the council about the money to allow him to buy the two patch machines. One for nineteen nine, one for fifty-one nine, and nineteen nine includes the attachment that he needs with it for a total of seventy-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I thank you. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Appreciate it. Um, the sheriff already had. It's just tough looking. You can call you sheriff. It's just hard. I hadn't got used to that yet.
I'm getting used to it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, he has a picture of that pile of rock that I showed you that, uh, was sent to me that was dumped on eleven fifty.
Is that eleven fifty north?
I don't know.
That's why I assume, need a place to put that gravel. Just let me know.
Oh, it's a big, it's a big rock. So I don't know. We don't know. It's maybe the Amish that bought it and then delivered, just delivered on the side, but they just dumped it, dumped it right outside the road and it's taken up half the road.
I, I messaged him. He hasn't responded, so.
Nathan?
Yeah.
Here's what.
He mentioned Amish, but I don't know if he knows for sure.
Well, there is Amish lives on that route.
It looks like it could have been somebody may have bought and that's where they wanted it to go and then, and the dump truck just dumped it there, but it's halfway up the road. That's gonna be dangerous tonight.
Yeah.
You may need to put some barricades on it tonight.
Put some barricades on it, but I wanted to know which was, if it was north or east.
I don't know. He didn't tell me. Let me see if, let me see if I can get him real quick. But you did, you, did you text him or did you Facebook him?
Uh, Snapchat.
I don't know what that is. But I don't have that do that.
But he has not opened.
Um, let me answer him here to see if I, uh. And if you've got a couple of minutes, let me ask before we're done. Okay, we'll wait. You've got a minute to wait around till we get through with the sheriff's business, then we'll, then we'll see. Okay, you guys got anything else? Randy?
Nope.
How has our budget held up with snow removal? Has it been kind of a normal year?
We went through a lot of sand this last time. As a matter of fact, we just hauled in and pushed calcium to another two thousand tons. We went through a big pile.
How's that treat your budget for that? Did, did you have enough budgeted to do that?
We've got enough.
Good, okay. All right, thanks. All right, Jason, what you got?
Well, I hope to, uh, apply for a grant for National Night Out, couple of funds that.
Okay.
Um, actually it's due Friday.
Actually, we could approve that now because there's no competition for those funds.
Okay.
The only reason we have to approve the grant request is just to make sure nobody else is competing for the same thing.
Right.
So I'd make the motion that we, uh, approve the sheriff's request to apply for a grant for National Night Out.
From the L C C.
Okay, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then I also have my, you guys need to see this then or not? I also have my sheriff contract. I don't know if you want to wait till Thursday to sign that or?
No, they'll sign that here and then the council will sign it on Thursday.
I have it.
What's it for? You mean like you get paid?
The salary. He thinks, he thinks it comes with a salary.
Yeah, I thought you just did it for fun. Got to carry a gun and write your ass and sirens going off and stuff. I do it for free.
Is it basically the same as, uh, what, uh, Justin had?
Yeah. And you see, he had, he had a copy of it too.
They always miss a date in the middle of the contracts, so.
All right.
You guys, okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I don't know what we got. Um, we don't have a number on it. It's just the contract, so. I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the compensation contract, uh, with the sheriff and I'll second that.
Oh, very sad.
Aye.
So how are things settling in? Okay? Chief Deputy, any value to you?
It was, uh, I'd say it was a quiet, smooth note for January.
Good.
Just your signature.
The, uh, Chief Deputy.
And we'll take it to the council.
Okay.
Chief Deputy, any good to you? Is he?
Yeah, he's, he's been great, so. Nice having him around.
Two six twenty-three. All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
We appreciate you and if, if, as we always say, if things come up that we can help you with, don't be shy about asking.
I appreciate it.
And if things are in a hurry, we can always do things, um, mid-year if we have to have an executive session or, or if it's something we can just agree on and then codify at the next meeting, so.
I appreciate it.
Don't hold off us up. We're here to help you.
The phones are the biggest thing that's gonna be addressed, so I appreciate that.
Good. Anybody else have anything? All right, is our motion due, Jerry?